Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Norfolk City Council meeting, July 21st, 2025. I'm going to call this meeting to order and inform the public of the location of the meetings act posted in the council chamber and accessible to all public members at all times. At this time, we'd like to start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy. Beckman.
Here.
Jensen. Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Mayor.
I'm here. I need approval of the consent agenda, please.
Submoved, Your Honor.
I would be abstaining from the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Langy, Webb, Beckman abstaining, Hildebrand, motion carries.
Can I get approval of the full agenda, please?
Submove, Your Honor.
We have a motion to second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that moves on to special presentations. This evening, we'll be getting a presentation by the Northeast Nebraska Regional Land Bank Board regarding upcoming property sales. Danny will be leading discussion on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, we're here tonight to talk about the land bank and some of the progress that we've made, really briefly, as well as talking about the property that the land bank currently holds that's going to be offered up for sale here soon. So, I'm just going to give a really quick introduction for those of you and those people watching at home or in our audience who don't know much about the land bank. Basically, we started it here, this is our second year, fully operational. The land bank itself, it's a statutory designation, it came from the Nebraska Legislature. It was formed originally in 2012, that's where the original legislation started, 2012, 2013 timeframe in there. The main reason for that was for Omaha and Lincoln. Everybody's familiar with the Capitol District in Omaha, as well as the rail yard in Lincoln. The ability, wait a second. Sorry. I'm going on on something else. Hold on one second, let me back up. Excuse me, long day. Let me start all over. So, it was first started back in 2013, unrelated to the rail yard district or any of that stuff. It started at that time for bigger cities to have the ability to take on these properties. There's a lot of dilapidation in bigger cities, and this allowed for Omaha and Lincoln specifically to take on these projects. And so, there's a lot of land bank law across the nation, it's individual to each state. Ours is very, very up and coming, we're very new to this, if you will, as a lot of the southern states started this very early on. So, this started in 2013. A large push for this was the Omaha Land Bank. And as time has gone on, other cities wanted this, right? So, first-class cities, second-class cities, villages. So, when this was later amended to allow for bigger, for smaller cities to combine to have a regional land bank. So, Norfolk, for example, cannot just have a standalone, we have to combine with other cities, so we've combined with Hayder. But ultimately, the goal is to turn, our mission, which comes straight from the, from state law, is to turn vacant, abandoned, and tax-diliguent properties into affordable, habitable properties that enhance community pride, create additional tax revenue, and support our most vulnerable neighborhoods and citizens. So, it's just an effort to clean up neighborhoods, and our, our regional land bank also has another goal of offering low-cost real estate to people that need it. Housing's expensive, we know that times are tough for a lot of families, so we're trying to, it's, we're trying to have a two-fold goal, taking, cleaning up neighborhoods, tearing down houses that cannot be rehabilitated otherwise, and then offering those lots to people that meet certain income goals. And so, how it was prior to the 2020 changes, that's the basis under which we are operating. We can have a land bank, but we have to join with others for formation. Right now, we're teamed up with the Village of Hayder. We can acquire, rehab, demolish, and develop property, we can discharge liens and special assessments of political subdivisions, that's a really big deal. So, people that have special assessments on their property for, you know, whatever reason, whether that be from a city or a county, or a lien, a tax lien, for example, we can discharge those as long as it's not something that's being held by a private, a private person for tax sales certificate purposes. Once, once you acquire that, once there's the closing, when you sell that, you get 50% of property taxes that come back to the land bank for five years, so it helps with the sustainability. So, can't issue bonds and notes, can't levy property taxes, exercise eminent domain or anything like that, can hold it for a nonprofit for no longer than a year. And then, another, some of the other changes that came from the 2020 changes, which is what allowed our land bank, it allowed the regional land bank, you have to have seven voting members appointed by each of the, each of the cities. So, for us, we had, we have a board appointed by the city of Norfolk, as well as Hayder. And they each come from a wide variety of areas that are statutory obligated, so you have legal, you have real estate, you have finance, there's a number of different board member qualifications, or you have to meet a certain level of statutory guidelines. So, it's tricky to fill those, but we've done a great job, we have a wonderful board, and some of them are here with us tonight. Also, we can't hold, you know, there's been some concerns about the city trying to, or the city or the land bank just trying to buy up this, this, you know, properties in Norfolk, that's, it's not really all, it's not all that possible, you can only hold 5%, but ultimately, when you're taking those on, what the land bank has focused on is taking on those properties that the private sector does not want. There's no interest by our board and by the staff that's helping with this land bank to get it going, there's no interest in competing with the private sector. The goal is to just take on those houses that are truly beyond the point of no return, completely dilapidated, a lot of times, there's absent owners, there's almost always a red tag, and it's been sitting there, and it's an unsightly issue for the neighbors, sometimes we have people living in there, going in there, stealing things. So, it's a, it's a problem, one of the properties that we're going to speak on had a giant hole in the roof, so just completely inhabitable. So, now, I'll turn it, I will turn it over to Lyle Lutt, as he has the information, he's going to speak to those parcels that we have currently available.
I'd like to recognize the board members. So, you have those that are here, come join us. On the board right now is, Rob Merrill's the president, Sasha Bones is the vice president, Juan Sandoval's the treasurer, also included in the board is Myra Mendoza, Randy Wilcox, Rod Johnson, John Koba, Thad Mirren. And we have the Hayder element as well, Myron Lawson is a hit citizen from there, and Mark Kraft is on the village board from there. Also, Councilman Webb fills that role now from this body, prior to him, it was Councilman Snorton. As far as staff goes, Val Grimes goes and sits at those meetings with us, Danny, Linnea Collis, Jeannie Kester, Gary Bretschneider before he retired, now that role being filled by Rita, and Julie Drahoda. It's a whole bunch of folks that come together to make that, make this happen. Danny already read the mission statement, and that's our guiding principles for trying to figure out how this is going to unfold. Obviously, there's a housing situation in the community, and we're, everybody's trying to do their best to resolve that. This won't fix it, but it'll help, and we hope that with time, it'll help considerably. One of the components is neighborhood pride and property values. When you, when those dilapidated properties come offline, that are unusable, uninhabitable, and new stuff gets put in place, we hope it brings up the property values, and folks on that block can take pride in their, in that street, and when they go to sell their properties, their values go up as well. But there's also unforeseen benefits that go along with this, is community cleanup. There's, from a public safety aspect, when those dilapidated properties come offline, there's no place for the, for the possums and the skunks and the coons to live in, the mice, that gets all cleared out, if there's, removes the potential for squatters to be in there, drug activity, safety elements from the nefarious activity that public safety would potentially be put in, removes the burden of command for the police and fire when they're trying to decide whether, when they get called there in the middle of the night, to put staff lives on the line. The moms and dads that go in those buildings to answer the call, if that building is not on fire, they don't have to decide, if that building is gone, it's not going to be on fire, they don't have to decide to put staff in harm's way to go in there and possibly save nothing. Another element from the public safety standpoint is when these properties do come into the land bank, the land bank has been gracious enough to allow public safety to train on them. So, we can have the police and fire from the region go off the training tower and go through the same courses over and over again. But seldom do the firefighters and police officers go into buildings that they're familiar with. It's very frequently, it's a structure that they are new to, new floor plans, new challenges that they meet with them. So, with, with these training opportunities, police can go in, do their room clearing, when they're done with that, fire can go cut holes in the roof, breach the walls, once that's done, the house can be demolished. There's only a couple, as Danny mentioned, there's only a couple land banks in the state, and, but it's not new to the US, there's actually 300, over 300 land banks in the US. But it is fairly new to Nebraska, Omaha being the oldest one, they got the jump on us. But, this one here is cutting edge, there's only a couple other ones in the community, in the state, and Danny and I think Gary have gone to the league conference to talk about getting these set up more across the state. Also, as she mentioned, Hayder's been our partner. We frequently get asked, can the land bank grow? Yes, it can. Can include other communities or counties and other agencies, however, the approach thus far has been a crawl, walk, run approach. Like to have acquired a few properties, get them cleaned up, get them sold, so that we know a, realize some efficiencies and know the process to go through. Once we get to that point, we can consider expanding to other political subdivisions as well, knowing that there's a significant financial consideration that goes to it, and there's a time, staff time consideration that goes into it, if we're going to be sending staff to other communities. I'll remind you that, like I said, this is cutting edge, we've never been down this, been down this road before, charting new waters, and we learn every step on this opportunity. We don't know what the future holds with this, and with that, we're going to look at the properties, the first property that's available. So, on your screens there, Val has the city website pulled up, and you can do the typical thing where you search for it, search for land bank. My quickest method of finding it is to scroll all the way down to the bottom of any city website, and look at the bottom right corner to where it says Northeast Nebraska Regional Land Bank. If you click on that, please, Val, and then in the separate window, actually, right here, along the left side, you'll see the regional land bank depicted, the minutes from the previous meetings, and the land bank properties. If you click on properties, you're going to see two things. One is the property that we're talking about today, 110 South Ninth Street. Above that, and to keep everybody tuned in, depending on how this one goes, hopefully in the near future, we're going to be doing the same thing again for 210 North Ninth. But using 110 South Ninth as a topic of discussion for tonight, can you open that link, please, Val? And in a separate link, go to the GIS website and pull up, excuse me, yeah, pull up that property and then the Google Streets view of the old house as well, so we can see what it looked like before and what it looks like after. So, on there, she's pulling that up. What you have here on the data sheet, that's on the city website, we tried to contain everything that we have in one document for the reader to look at. You'll see on the pages she has pulled up here, it's zoned R3 with water and sewer available, and the brief history of this is, there was an out-of-state owner, it was dilapidated, needed to be demolished, was challenging to communicate with the individual, eventually, they gave the property to the land bank, which leads us, it was demolished to what you see there. Can you show the Google Streets view of what it looked like prior to? And it's gotten shovel-ready, that's what it looked like prior to, and Google Streets view would be a good one as well. It's now ready to be built on. We encourage everybody that's considering this to make sure they look at the packet, because as we mentioned, staff time is very challenging at this moment with the, everything that's taking place in the budget. A lot of the questions that could potentially be asked are included in this packet. As the, she looks at that and pulls it up, there we go. That's what it looked like not too long ago.
That was on a good day.
That was on a good day, everything's green and lush at that point. If you go back to the packet now, please, Val, thank you. That's vacant today, scroll down to the next page, shows the water and sewer line, the location, alley access to the west. Next page, next few pages talks about the application. So, if somebody that's interested in buying, wanting to partake in this, the application needs to be filled out. And, you know, I look at this thing 100 times or more, and I still see grammatical errors, you scroll down, it's going to say page four instead of one. As I said, this is a work-in-process. So, the applicants can print this off, fill this out, if you go to the next page there, Val, please, top offer, it says, should be say page three at the bottom, there you go. The board asked, has an asking price of $12,000, as depicted at the top. If somebody wants to submit a different offer, they're welcome to do that, more or less. And historically, what we think of usually is ask, the highest asking price if you're the property owner, and lowest asking price if you're the buyer. But in an effort to keep the cost down, and considering the priorities, which are also depicted on the very first page of this document, if you'd scroll back up to that, please, Val, there's three priorities as the board goes through to choose, choose the buyers. In the second paragraph, the first priority, the highest priority for the land bank is the potential buyers who intend to purchase the properties to be used for owner occupation and have the highest, have household income that is at or below 80% of area median income, AMI. The next priority, further down in that paragraph, the board will look next at the potential owner occupant, owner occupants' families who are close to the 80% AMI. And third paragraph, or third priority in the next paragraph, the next priority for the regional land bank is community-minded developers who intend to build affordable housing, as defined by HUD, for those household incomes 80% AMI or less. That's some of the principles that the, and guidelines that the board will be looking at, is trying to choose who, to sell the property to. For the folks that are interested in filling this out, on page four of the document of the application, it shows where to submit the information, to the Northeast Nebraska Regional Land Bank, at 310 West Norfolk Avenue, Suite D, or if you are in, if you know where Walgreens is, right behind there. Continuing down to the next page, it's the compliance agreement. One of the funding sources for the land bank is 50% of the property taxes for five years following the sale. So, this is an important thing, what we're trying to avoid is having somebody buy the property and sit on it, because if, if the property is clear, and you look at this, this property specifically, if there's no structure that's put on it, there's going to be about $100 in property tax that gets generated a year, which means 50% of that for five years would come back to the land bank. So, about $240, $250 total. However, the faster that a property can be improved, the sooner the property tax can be lift, brought up, and as such, more money back into the land bank to clean up other houses. Scroll down to the purchase agreement, if you would, please. What you see here, what the reader will see, is a sample purchase agreement. We don't know who the buyer is going to be, so we don't know if they want to move quickly or slowly, perhaps there's extenuating circumstances that they need a closing later on in the year, but that's generally what a purchase agreement will look like. Continuing down, there's a step-by-step process on how the land bank flows, and the next page is a frequently asked questions. As Danny pointed out, one of the, one, two, three, fourth talking points here, land bank doesn't want to compete with private entities, with property flippers, builders, real estate agents, if there's a market for a specific property on the private side, we want them to go that way. This is, the whole goal of the land bank is for somebody to, that's upside down, and nobody will buy it, and that's where the land bank gets involved. Who should consider giving to the land bank is next, next component, if you're a tax person, a legal person, real estate attorney, or financial individual, and you have a client that is maybe upside down with a property and can't get rid of it, steer them that way, steer them towards the land bank for some, for some questions. Property owners, if they are upside down and want to consider having further discussions about it, lending institutions with REOs, real estate owned, that is a thorn in the side they need to get rid of, be great for the land bank. The land bank is tax-deductible donation, or, so we, when we go to search for contractors to do work demolition, if a contractor has a new person that needs to learn how to use a backhoe or a excavator or dump truck, and they're willing to give a cut rate on doing that, we're open to that. Whatever we can do to save money in those coffers to buy, to clean up more of the community, we want to look at that. What's next? We hope that this discussion stimulates conversation in the community, folks, go to this website, oh yeah, that's a good point. One other thing, on the bottom of here is a couple examples of floor plans that we know would fit on that property. Doesn't necessarily mean that has to be what it is, but if somebody's looking for what it could potentially be, that's what it is. So, we hope as buyers, explore the website, and I know sometimes it can be challenging, maybe confusing to do these sort of things, but to print it off, submit an application by the end of August, August 29th, I think it was, 28th, close of business, it's a Friday, because in September, we're going to have another land bank meeting, towards the end of September. We'd like to have all those packets assembled and ready to go, the submissions that we get, and take them to the board, and say, this is what we got, and we try and figure out if we have somebody that's, that we can work with to sell this property. And if not, we'll go back to the drawing board and figure something out. If this goes smoothly, we're going to turn around and do the next one, 210 North Ninth Street. But we don't know what the future holds in that regard. Finally, before I, my other two friends here want to talk, as we go through, as we go through this, hopefully this fall, we're going to have a strategic planning session, or perhaps next winter, at some point, or a council retreat. But at some point, as you go through your wards and you look at potential properties, you know people in the community, been around a long time, you know perhaps somebody that's been upside down or struggling with it, we can be, the land bank can be considered when it comes time, as a priority, as the elected officials and division heads come together to come up with a new strategic plan, that this could be something for further exploration. Thoughts or comments, president, vice president?
You want to go first?
Yeah, sure, why not? Hi, everybody, good to see you all, thank for having me.
What's your name?
Oh, my name's Rob Merrill, thank you. I don't have much to add to what Lyle said, other than, you know, we are, as a land bank, we're really plowing new ground here, there's not been one in the city, there's been several in the state. Omaha, for example, I don't know. You know, we don't share a lot in common with Omaha, and the things that they have in there program are not, there's a lot more in there that really, that wouldn't apply to us, and they do things there a little bit differently than, than we do here. So, we are plowing some new ground. I have to say as well, we're doing that at the speed of government, which as most of you know is not very fast, right? And sometimes not very efficient. But, our goal at the land bank is not to have this be an entity that, that puts money into the entity. We want to wash this through, is want to be a zero-balance kind of a board, I guess you say, or an entity. So, we serve two, really, two different kinds of customers. Now, we have one customer that has a dilapidated dwelling that is beyond repair, that needs to be torn down and gotten rid of, and there's several around the city, and I'm sure you've all seen them. The other customer is that, is that person, that family that, out there that needs some type of an affordable home, but the barrier to entry is steep these days, and anything that we can do to bring some of that cost down and give them an opportunity to buy some, some ground at a reasonable price, I think is hopefully helping them get into something that would be, that would be affordable for them. So, that's our goal, and as I said, we're crawling and not running at this point, but I'm really interested in seeing how the community embraces this. I know as a homeowner in the third ward, I have a house three doors down from me that was taken down, and I, the day they took it down, I couldn't have been any happier, because the day they took that down, the property values in the neighborhood went up. Things got better in a hurry, it's a vacant, vacant lot right now, but there will be some building on it. And that is certainly a good thing for the folks that own the properties around there. The other thing that, that happens, I want to say this before, I forget, you had talked about us receiving half of the property taxes for five years, and how much was that?
Well, if it doesn't get improved on, it's only going to be 250 bucks.
Yeah, $250 for every year?
For five years.
For five years. Oh, boy. Well, that's not tons, right? Let's face it, it's not a lot of money. But what happens if somebody does come along and they, they build a property there, and they buy, certainly the materials it takes to build the property, they hire people to do the work, they buy refrigerators, they buy furniture, they get into the neighborhood and they start spending the money that the rest of us all spend to run a household and, and try to make a good life. So, the property tax is part of it, sales tax is a bigger part of it, in my opinion. So, as we go, as we go through this, these are the types of things that, that I keep in the back of my mind, and in that, hope that we can make a success out of this land bank.
The only thing, I wanted to kind of go off a little bit to give you guys numbers, and even the community, so that AMI, what that is, it's based off of the median income. So, when we're looking at that 80%, that's actually only $83,000, that's, that's at 80%. If you get to 125%, that's 104,000. So, when we're looking at these homes, we want to make sure, in the land bank, we want to make sure that it's feasible for people in our community, so I just want to make that very clear, it's not like we're selling $500,000 homes, like, we want to make sure, if you look at the statistics behind our city of what the annual income is, this does follow quite a few families, so we're here to support. And then the other thing, if you look at the price of 13, I think, 13,012, I was, 12, 13, 12,000, thank you. Looking at 12,000 for a piece of land here in Norfolk, look at some of the comparables in town, just on your own. And so, this is where we come in to kind of help facilitate some of those struggles that, whether it's people that maybe not have good credit, the minimum jobs, kind of, the minimum wages, we're here to help, and so, that's what I got.
Questions from elected officials or comments?
So, does the city attorney then handle the real estate transaction, the purchase agreement?
So, yeah, so that purchase agreement, if you scroll up there, that is a document that Danny came up with from other land banks, I think is the genesis for the basis of it, which then we, she spun to fit this role. And like I said earlier, some of this will change probably, potentially, depending on who buys it, to, we make sure we're working with the buyer to the best of our ability. Yep.
Do you, do you mean like the closing, councilman, or just?
No, not the closing, just the sale of it and also the purchase of it.
And also the sale of it, I was just curious.
Yep, just, just trying to go off of what other ones are doing and not recreate their wheel, but ultimately, if we have an interested buyer, they can contact the housing agency, re- the housing
re- the housing agency. And between working with the housing agency, and legal, and Val with zoning, really can have a comprehensive look at what they want to do, and make sure it's right for that space, and making sure that they're connected with their banker, so that they can accomplish what they want to accomplish. So it's a lot, a lot of staff, you know, a lot of divisions are helping out, as well as the board members are really involved, too.
Other questions or comments, from anybody else?
I'll just give an input. One of the biggest challenges we have is marketing the land bank, to let people know these things are available. So one of the areas of improvement that we need to find is how to market, how to get this information out, so people understand this is something that's available to them. And then working with the state legislature to make sure that state statute doesn't create a bunch of red tape for us to operate these land banks, to make it affordable and easy for someone to develop these lots. So that's kind of where we're at as a board. Marketing, and working with Senator Dover to get to where these land banks can function and operate, to get something. I think when we get the first house on a lot, then I think the next one will come a lot quicker, but the first one's taking more time, like Rob says, moving the pace of government, so.
Justin, I have to agree with you. Hard to market something when you don't have all your ducks in a row, your tools ready. And I feel like that we've kind of reached that point, and we've got to do that.
Other questions, comments? Otherwise, we appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Moving on to our regular agenda, item number 25, consideration approval ordinance number 5932, amending section 24-110 of the city code to reduce the speed limit on First Street from Elkhorn Bridge to Andy's Lake Road.
I'll offer for consideration the approval of ordinance number 5932.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second, we're going to discussion. Chief's going to lead that discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. This proposed ordinance amendment to 24-110 of the city code would reduce speed limit on South First Street from the bridge, the Elkhorn River Bridge, from 55 miles an hour to 40 miles per hour, to Andy's Lake Road. This recommendation is based on safety concerns for pedestrians and bicyclists who frequently use the bridge area. The roadway is narrow, lacks shoulders or sidewalks, and presents a significant risk for non-vehicular traffic. Lowering the speed limit through this stretch will help improve overall safety, ensure more consistent speed control through the mixed-used corridor. This came in as a complaint, Will Elwell, from County Commissioner, that was fielded a complaint from a resident of Andy's Lake. And so we looked at it, and this is what we proposed.
Chief, is it correct, too, that there's actually two different speed limits on that road at that location, too?
On the bridge itself, it's, it overlaps. There's a 55 and 40 going one direction and the other. So yes, it does overlap there.
And this would, this would make it the same speed limit?
From Andy's Lake going north to Jackson, it'd be all 40 miles an hour. And I just drove it this morning, and it just seems like a really appropriate speed, Anything else?
Nope. Any other discussion or any questions?
I'll ask one, just out of curiosity. When does it switch to 35, then?
You know, there's a sign just north of Monroe, is where it says 35, but I think it switches at Jackson. But it's kind of gray, gray to me, without digging deeper into it, if it starts at Monroe, or if it starts at Jackson.
Chief, you said this came from a county commissioner's concerns, from somebody on Andy's Lake?
Yes, Ron Schmidt contacted Will Elwell.
Before his annex, they had all the power to change it to 40 miles an hour.
I think, though, Corey, hasn't the traffic increased on that road with the access to the campers and stuff back in there now? I think they used to come off 13th, now they're coming off Monroe to get in there. So it's changed a little bit.
Then it seems to be a lot of bikers going up and down that road to get to the trail. That's what I noticed the most. People walking and riding their bikes over there, so, yeah.
And working with Anna Ellen on, you know, the safest things for pedestrians and bicyclists, so I think reducing the speed would be appropriate.
All right, any other questions? Anybody in the public have any questions about this? Want to come up? Okay. All right, seeing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 24-110 of the official city code to reduce the speed limit on First Street from the Elkhorn Bridge to Andy's Lake Road, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5932 carries on first reading.
Your idea would move, we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5932 on second and third reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5932 carries on second and third.
Right, that moves on to item number 26, consideration approval to award a contract for the West Plant Piping Improvements Project.
I'll offer for consideration the approval to award a contract to the West Plant Piping Improvement Project.
Try to say that three times.
Ready? Yeah.
Forward.
Let's see how many times I mess it up. So, thank you, Mayor, Council. What we got in front of you, and there's a handout that was handed out, because we didn't quite have this done until this morning. We got the bid this morning for this project. So the handout is on your desk there. There's also a few in the back and out in the front there, for anybody that wants to see this bid letting that we received. So we're looking for approval of the award with Rutledge Construction for the West Plant Piping Improvements, in the amount of $425,408. Now, what this project is, is the connection to the 2 million gallon tank reservoir that we're building right now at the West Plant. You're probably asking, why wasn't that part of the project to begin with? Well, originally, it was part of the West Water Treatment Improvement Project, that was out to bid in January of this past winter. That project there, the bid was pulled, so therefore this project, this part of the project was pulled out, and we're presenting it tonight to get it done. So this will connect the 24-inch suction line to the tank, and also connects the 36 discharge line back into the West Plant. And why this is critical, this is how we're going to fill the tank, provide the disinfection, and do the leak testing for that 2 million gallon tank, to close out that contract. So once that's all said and done, this tank will be fully utilized for future operation. The construction estimate we had from Black and Veatch for this part of the project was $699,700, or $377. So Rutledge is coming in at $425,408, is a savings of $273,969. So city's recommending approval.
Chad, how soon will this take in effect?
So, once we get the approval, hopefully tonight, we're going to go ahead and contact Rutledge tomorrow, and then they're going to get the process. I mean, I think they got this stuff kind of on a temporary place order right now. The contract says it needs to be done by, I think, September 20th. So they'll be moving out there pretty quickly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from anybody in the tenants? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that brings us on to item number 27, consideration of ordinance number 5933, amending section 2-19.1 of the city code to provide for public comment period at the first city council meeting of each month, and to amend section 2-19.2, limiting public comments to three minutes, with both changes taking effect at the first council meeting in September.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance 5933, amended section 2-19.1 and section 2-19.2.
Second. All right, we have a motion of second. Danny, you'll be leading the discussion on this, so.
Yes, thank you. So this ordinance is a long time coming. It seeks to amend two sections of city code. First and foremost, the primary reason we are introducing this ordinance is because we've received a lot of public feedback that they want to see more open comment sessions, where the public has the ability to come up and speak to any item of their choosing. Traditionally, we've had that, well, we used to have it, we've always had it quarterly, I think, so we, so right now, we have four a year, correct, Kylie? So we have four a year. This would change it, so that we have one a month. So we'd be going from four open comment sessions a year to 12 a year. And previously, that was just kind of an informal policy. However, we amended section 2-19.1 in order to formalize it. So it says that the presiding officer, the city council, shall provide opportunity for open public comment during the first council meeting of each month. Each person addressing the city council during the open public comment period shall do so in accordance with the requirements set forth in the next section that we amended. And the next section is, that has to do with the time limit. Seeing as we are increasing the amount of time that each meeting is going to take, and we all know, we have a lot of marathon meetings here as of late, we amended this down to three minutes. So whether it's, you stand up and speak on any agenda item, or you stand up and speak, you can still, let me, I want to clarify first, even the meetings that there's going to be an open comment session, citizens are still able to speak on the agenda items. The council, the mayor and council, you all made it clear that you value that. Some cities do one or the other, a lot of cities don't do any open comment, but so, I want to make it clear for the public that this allows citizens to come once a month and to do open comment, but it doesn't take away their ability to speak on each agenda item if they should choose. It just limits, it'll be a three-minute time limit. A lot of times, we're not enforcing that currently. It's not always something that we enforce, but there are times where we have something that comes up, and there's maybe 10 or 15 people that want to speak on it, and in the interest of time, the council, you know, you can make people stick with the three minutes. So just trying to be respectful of everybody's time while still valuing citizen input.
Danny, I have a question. So section 2-19.2, does that three-minute limitation apply to an agenda item also?
Yes, it's, now, so it always gets kind of interesting, because if a citizen stands up to speak, and for example, if you, Councilmen, aren't, you interrupt and ask a question, we don't usually follow that. We, you know, we kind of, we give people the opportunity to say what they need to say, and answer your question. So a lot of times, we're going over time minutes, we're going over the time limits anyway. So it doesn't include that, just if you're standing up speaking on something, you're standing up speaking on open comment, there's a three-minute timeline that this would establish. And, you know, if you wanted to go to five minutes, you could say, for purposes of this topic, and complexity of this situation, you're going to change it for this meeting to five minutes. I mean, you can always add more, you just can't take away, you know, take it away. The other thing I was just thinking of was the fact that, there had been a big push for us to do open comments at every single meeting. That's a really hard thing to do. There is a number of cities that do not do any open comment at all, at the guidance of the League of Municipalities. The reason for that is, you run into Open Meetings Act issues. And if there's something that people want to speak to during an open comment session that hasn't been advertised, we can't have a discussion about that. So what this, the way we've set it up, what it contemplates is, if a citizen stands up at the open comment session at the first meeting in September, and they bring something up that we, you know, you as a council, and mayor and council, think is pertinent for your staff to go back and research and come back for discussion, that gives two weeks until the next meeting. So that second meeting can be, you know, at the top, there can be a discussion about something that was brought up originally, without violating the Open Meetings Act. So that's why we structured it that way. There is no legal requirement to have open comment session. You just have to let citizens speak at each meeting. So we were already fulfilling that by letting citizens speak on every agenda item. This just goes above and beyond, as we, as my understanding, is we want to respond to citizen concerns about open comment sessions and having more of them.
Thank you.
And Danny, if a citizen has an issue, they could always go to their council person, or some city staff, and that could also be made an agenda item for discussion, correct?
Yes, if it gets to that point, I mean, a lot of times, I think staff is very easy to access. If you have, if you have an issue, that can be resolved quickly by a staff person, that you can always reach out to staff, one-on-one. I mean, we take calls like that all the time, and we're happy to resolve them. But yes, if it's something, if it's a conversation, a question that comes up that begets a larger conversation, or a code change, or an agenda item for discussion, then yes, that's been something that's came up, and we've put it on, and we've had that as an advertised agenda item.
Great, thank you.
Well, I think this is something that we've been discussing for quite a while now, and I think it's safe to say that everybody sitting up here seems to have a different opinion on what we should do. And so the way this boiled down to is basically trying to take everybody's thoughts on this, and try to get it into a format that we all agree upon, that we can get a vote to approve this on. So I know that not everybody's happy with how this laid out. Personally, I could have seen it go every meeting, but that's obviously my take on it, it's not everybody else's take on it. So I'm trying to make this work out for everybody up here, so as we're going through this, we're in agreement on how this is handled. Once, right now, I'm proposing to have these comments at the beginning of the meeting, but that could change, depending on what the agenda looks like. So I think that, with the discussion we've had on this, I think we're, I think we can find a general consensus, this is working in the spirit of, I guess, agreement here, so.
Danny, why, why do we as a council want to constrain ourselves? Why wouldn't we leave the amount of time open to the presiding officer of that meeting to decide what they want to put for time constraints on that meeting? Or if someone's unruly, or someone has to go over, and we want to get further information on it, why wouldn't we allow, why wouldn't we take that time constraint out, allowing the presiding, the presiding officer, the ability to do what's best for that meeting, or that subject, or that situation? Why do we put ourselves, why do we cuff ourselves onto a time limit?
The presiding officer can still expand that time limit, so you can still say, you know, we're going to do five minutes for this, for whatever reason. There's still that ability to expand that. The problem has come up, and it was brought up by some people, that we have had meetings where we've had 15 people speak on something, and that does, that does create a very long meeting, and going from five to three minutes, there's no intent to cuff, to cuff anything, it's just to allow everybody to speak, because, I mean, realistically, we're trying to offer people the opportunity to speak multiple times, on an open comment, on something not on the agenda. But if there's 15 agenda items that we speak to, a citizen can stand up and speak 15 times, and we have some citizens that do that. And so, but it does create, it creates time, I mean, and we have had a lot of long meetings. And so the intent is not to handcuff, or to remove the ability for input, it's just to allow that opportunity, while also recognizing that this is a time obligation for everybody that's in the room. But again, it can still be expanded, you just can't, you can't go from three to one minute. You can't do anything like that.
So can we change the language to say a minimum of three minutes in length, otherwise decided by the presiding officer? The perception is, is that we don't want to hear anyone talk for more than three minutes. And I know that's not the truth of anybody on this council. If someone wants to talk more than three minutes, if it's something productive, I think we'd all want to hear it. So to me, it feels like we're, we're saying, we don't want you to talk any more than three minutes. And I don't think that's our intent.
Because it says, unless further time is granted by the council, limit him or his or her address to three minutes in length. So if that's...
So how'd that work, like, before each meeting, you set a time, you know, for the people, open comment, you'd say, tonight, we're talking for...
Or you just ignore the limit. I think that's what we do a lot of times, right? I think, I think there's a lot of times where we have a full, a full house, and so we really have to be cognizant of that timeline, so you do do the five minutes, and Kylie notifies people. But if it's, if it's a situation where there's, it's, you know, it's not overly controversial, there's not a ton of people here, you're probably just going to ignore the limit, as we've, as we've been doing. That's what a lot of cities do. We've talked to most of the cities today that are comparable to us, a lot of them don't have this issue. They say, well, like, when formal... They say, well, like informally, you know, kind of like we had informally, we do this much time, but it's not, it's not a problem here. A lot of cities do three minutes, some do, some do five, some do two, there's one that does two minutes, but a lot are three, a lot, there's three that, including Columbus, doesn't, just doesn't allow for open comment, but they do allow speaking on the agenda. So, people are handling, handling this a number of different ways, because as long as we're giving citizens the ability to provide input, we're meeting the law. So, we've already been going above and beyond, this is just another step, but there's nothing in the legislature that dictates time. You can, you can always add more to that, just as we've kind of always done. But if you wanted to add or change language, I mean, we can certainly have that, that conversation, this is just, the baseline is three minutes, you can always go above the, what that is.
And I would just add on to that, too, I think without a timeline, you know, now you're, you're really subject to giving one person more time than another. I think objectively, the three minutes at least sets a table and a standard to follow. And I do think agenda items and open comment periods are slightly different, too. I think with an agenda item, you are getting the councilperson or mayor asking questions, and that automatically delays that time. It does not short them their three minutes of speaking, because when there's an engagement, that, that conversation can go on for, for a long time. Whereas in that open comment section, I mean, we're limited in having a discussion because that is not an agenda item. So, you're not going to get those questions from council on that open comment section period. That is, that is, that three minutes is just their time to talk.
All right, any other discussion? I see there's people that want to come speak, so go on forward.
Takes me a minute to sign my name, so. I think this gives the opinion that your constituents and citizens' value is limited to three minutes, and I think that's a big mistake. I think it's really important, what gets said from this side of the room, to you folks sitting up there that are representing us. Sometimes it takes ten seconds, sometimes it takes a little more, some people have a little trouble communicating. I think five minutes is a good window, and if we're here a little later, we're all doing our jobs to make the community better, for citizens and everyone here. So I think it's a mistake, and I think it starts, sets a bad example by saying three minutes. Put it back to where it was, five minutes, and let's move on. Thank you.
So are you, are you saying, once, the first meeting of every month for five minutes, or going back to, once a quarter for five minutes?
If we're going to have an open communication, or whatever we're going to call it, I'm fine with five.
But my, but you said, go back to the way it was, that's what I'm asking.
No, I think, I think there needs to be a little more openness from communication standpoint. We've, we've all sat here late, we've also all gone home early. We're doing our jobs, we're trying to help the community get better. And I do think you need to present the openness to make citizens want to come up and communicate with you guys. Because, I'll be honest, I think it's a little intimidating for some people to come up here. And if you can give an open meeting where they can communicate, maybe we'll learn a little bit more about what we need to be doing in this community.
No, and I, and I understand what you're saying, I'm just asking, when you said, go back to the way it was, are you talking five minutes?
I'm just talking, taking that three minutes out and putting a five there.
Okay, but then back to the way it was, that it is presently is once a quarter? Are you wanting once a month?
Once a month is fine, but change it to five minutes, just to give the citizens the sense that our opinion is valued.
And it is valued, so thank you. That's why I was trying to get clarification. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
And I am actually, thank you for extending the opener, I agree a hundred percent with the, once a month, for open comment. I do know that this is going to lead to all agenda items eventually, three minutes will lend to even agenda items, basically, I know how this works. And at the legislature, it was three to five minutes, now you go to the legislature, and during the public hearings, they give you three minutes, and that's ultimately where this will end up to. Even though you have the ability to give more time, it won't happen eventually. Maybe it will for a while, but because you put it into a statute or a deal, this is where it ends up every time. And the reason why other cities aren't doing it, or whatever the case may be is, is because they've taken advantage of the people of their cities or whatever, just because they're doing it somewhere else doesn't mean Norfolk, Nebraska should be doing that. We're trying to participate, we want to speak with you guys, and I think timeframes actually should be based on amount of people. And the best example I can give you is that I've been to many meetings at Madison County Commissioners, and when we walk into there, they're very clear, they don't have a set time limit. I'll walk in and say, how much time do I have, Troy, whatever, and they'll say, fifteen minutes, ten minutes, if, when there's big meetings and stuff like that, they do set a time limit before the meeting, depending upon the number of people that are showing up for those particular meetings. And you all can do the exact same thing. You don't need to have something in statute that says that this is what you get, and that's all, I guess I would have to say to that, is, you put it in statutes, it'll end up being there. That's what it'll end up being. I, I say, take the time limit off and make it up to the discretion of the committee, of the board, when you have your meeting. It's pretty obvious, the controversial meetings are going to be, you're going to have to set a time limit, no doubt about it, but why set a time limit on something that's really important? Even if it is a little controversial, I can tell you, it's very difficult to give accurate information to you guys in three minutes. Very difficult, and this is happening every day at the legislature right now. I can guarantee you, you cannot give a three-minute talk on something that's especially really super important in three minutes. Try it yourselves once, and it's difficult. Five minutes is, is pushing it in some situations, so I would say, I would give that time limit discretion to you guys as a board before you start, and not put it in a statute.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Hello, Sasha, I introduce myself. One thing I would like, Kylie, if you could, and maybe I cannot do this, but I will ask, please give me a three-minute timeframe, okay? Because I'm going to demonstrate why three minutes would be helpful, and I'll explain it. So, I think it's important that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and that change is uncomfortable. I believe it's equally important that our contributions during these sessions are purposeful and constructive. Repeated complaints without offering solutions or respectful dialogue can detract from the effectiveness of these meetings, and it slows the progress on issues affecting our community. I encourage all who speak to focus on clear, actionable feedback rather than frustrations. By doing so, not only do we show respect for your guys' time and efforts, but it also helps foster a more productive discussion with our community members. Constructive engagement strengthens our community's voice far more than persistent negativity. Let's all commit to making our public comments count and supporting solutions that benefit everyone. And just, so I work in the behavioral health field, and I'll just give you a little feedback, the brain can only hold five things in any time I do family sessions, so anything more than three minutes, you guys aren't going to remember, and it's going to cause more issues. Time over, please. Thank you.
It's minute sixteen.
That much?
Minute sixteen.
This is extremely frustrating to me. I've been asking for almost three years to allow the citizens an opportunity to have public comment more than once every three months, and now this is what's proposed. It's extremely frustrating. It feels like it's in retaliation for asking for a vote to hold more public comment periods. Why would a request to allow public comment periods more frequently, which is now proposed to only be two more times a quarter, result in significantly reducing the amount of time a citizen may speak to the council about a regular agenda item? This ordinance reduces the amount of time a citizen can speak by forty percent, down to a hundred and eighty seconds to convey their thoughts or concerns. Why? Do you really care that little about your constituents, that you only want to listen to them for three minutes? How is it that a developer can come in and talk to many of you on this council for an hour or more in private, asking you to give them millions of dollars of taxpayer money in the form of TIF, and that's acceptable? But a citizen comes up here and they've only got three minutes of your time? I recently tried to contact a councilperson in my ward about a TIF agenda item, and they wouldn't even return my phone call. So I guess the only way to explain my thoughts is to come to this meeting, and I've only got three minutes, according to this proposal. Does that seem fair or right to anybody? It sure doesn't to me. When was the current five-minute limit ever a significant problem? I've been coming to every city council meeting for the last three years, and I can't hardly remember a single time where it's been a significant problem. And if it was, you have a mechanism. Section two dash nineteen one D allows you to adjust that time at your will, it's in your code already. So why would you put something in code to reduce it to three minutes? Better let, just listen to what your constituents have to say. This proposal is extremely disappointing. I urge you to remove the three-minute time limit, allow the public to speak on a public comment period once a month, or every meeting. There's been multiple examples in recent, recent months of people who came up here and discussed, and it's been five minutes, five minutes or longer. It's not been an issue. How do you choose who gets five minutes and who gets three minutes? There's a couple of meetings in the last few months that the recognition and presentation time was ten or twenty minutes, far longer than citizens even have to speak. I, I just don't get it, it just makes no sense. Put it back to five minutes, give the citizens opportunity, encourage them to come to these meetings, make them feel that they were given an adequate amount of time to express themselves, and that they were listened to. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Jim, I got a, I got a question for you, and this was proposed to me earlier today, that the way it's, this is proposed right now for a time limit annually, that's thirty-six minutes versus twenty minutes. Five minutes, once a quarter, is twenty minutes, three minutes, by twelve months out of the year, is thirty-six minutes, so you're actually increasing your, your overall annual time in this proposal.
For the public comment period, not for the agenda items. You're limiting your agenda items to three minutes now, it used to be five. You're cutting every discussion on every agenda item down to three minutes.
Okay.
That's if there's no discussion.
Yeah.
If there's discussion, then that's extended.
But if you're preparing remarks to talk about what you want to talk about on an agenda item, you got to prepare those remarks for three minutes, because you don't know whether there's going to be discussion. You know your hamstring to three minutes, that's all you can talk.
Well, to be honest, I think, I just, we were having this discussion, I, the timeframe, I wasn't even thinking about, I was thinking about how many times we were going to do it per year. If we're going to do it before the meeting, after the meeting, one time a month, twice a month. That was what I was focused on, I didn't, I didn't realize that five to three minute was going to be such a issue. So if it's a major issue, I have no problem going from three minutes to five minutes. I, to me, it was just a, the bigger thing was to get it out there once, or, once a month, and then we just, I think the last close, I think it was like, three minutes or what? Sure. So it wasn't like a real thought process went into limiting it from three to five, that was just, everybody was just spitballing what they thought, so if that's, because that's a concern out here, is the three to five, like, what's the difference in just moving it from three to five? Because it's not, I don't think that was a big deal. Most of you guys were, but the deal was, how many times to have it, when to have it? I don't ever remember the amount of time being part of the discussion. So I think that was just kind of an over, just maybe an oversight, or just maybe, you know, we didn't think it was as big a deal as it is. So thank you for bringing that up, because it sounds like it is a major concern, and if it is, that's not a big deal to go from three to five.
And you have the ability to, if you've got twenty people here, you have.
I'm just trying to tell you the actual thought process, I don't think anybody was out there going, darn it, we're going to, we're going to make sure nobody can say anything. The thing was, when are we going to do it, how often are we going to do it? Do we talk on every agenda item, do we not talk on every agenda item? Do we do this, this? And so, everybody's weighing everything in out, and I think the three to five minutes was just out there in the, in the rough, and it wasn't even really talked about. So, I think it was just suggested, and we're like, ah, yeah, sure, why not?
Yeah, I mean, there is no.
So that's my take on the, the conversations I had.
The intent, there's no ill intent here, the only time it's ever come up is when we've had situations where there are many, many people that want to speak on one thing, it would be nice to limit it.
We have many, many people, and we can't fit everything, and we may have to say, we're going to reduce the time to talk to two and a half minutes, three minutes.
So we would just need to amend, so if we just, we would just need to amend this accordingly, which the presiding officer could do that.
Sure.
Now, not under the current code, but we could, I mean, we can amend this again to just say five minutes unless, you know, we can, we can amend it, that's, that's fine.
We rarely get in a situation where we're having so much conversation that we can't allow people to talk for five minutes.
Danny, can we amend this the way it is right now? Can we just amend ordinance fifty-nine thirty-three?
If there's, I mean, just to go back to the five minutes and keep everything else as it is here? Yeah, you can do that, it can pass on, it can pass on first reading tonight, it can't, but it can't pass on all three, you'd have to come back on second, and then you can pass it next time on second and third, but it.
I want to offer amendment on ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three, moving the public's, limiting the time limit, comments to three minutes to five.
Second.
Jim, can I ask you a question before we, we go to vote on this? You're a very involved citizen, and I don't think anybody's going to despite that, but you're, but we allow, the way this sits, to comment on every regular agenda item, and now it sounds like we have the proposal for five minutes. And you are a co-chair on the TIF committee, and you limit your conversation with those that are in the crowd till the very end. I guess in return, I would ask for the people that have contacted me and have visited with me, that they are able to speak after every agenda item at your TIF committee that you are a co-chair of.
You know, we've, Troy and I, that's what we decided upon when we set that up, certainly that can be changed. I mean, the only people that we've had come have been developers who wanted money, so sure, we can let them talk.
That's not necessarily, I can go back to the first meeting, there was no, the developer.
There was, there was one other person who was not.
Then he, and he waited in completely till the end, and, and I think there's others that don't want to wait till the end, and they want to, they want to strike when the iron is hot on that agenda item that you are discussing.
Yep, yep, I have no problem.
I guess I would ask that of your TIF committee that you are a co-chair of, to go ahead and let us comment on every item like we let you here.
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, I just, I was going to ask every single person, and since it got a little more when you came up here, I just, just, this is not a, anything, but, but, this is just a, I want to, I want to know your feeling on this. So if I said, hey, it's a three minute, but we're going to extend it for however long you need, if the topic so warrants, or five minutes, and it's a hard stop, period, five minutes, hard stop, don't care. five minutes and it's a hard stop, period. Five minutes, hard stop, don't care. Which would you prefer? I'm, this is not, and this is no inkling on, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the amendment to five. So I'm just, I just, curiosity question.
Well, I don't, I think that's a slippery slope. Um, I would not put in a three-minute hard limit because you're here today, might be somebody else here two years from now, six years from now. Um, and that's what's in code. So I would at least give the citizens five minutes. I think to limit it to three minutes in any way, shape or form is not right.
Okay, but my question was, was would you rather have a three minute that gives you, where we don't enforce it like we do now, where we just say, you know, as long as there's discussion and we're not dragging things out, you can talk however long you want to. Or would you rather say it's five minutes with a hard stop at five minutes, period, end of the story. You're done at five minutes.
Let me ask you a question. Do you want it to stop at five minutes?
Jim, I'm gonna, I'm not going to let you divert around this question. I want to, I want you to answer my question.
But, but that is my answer because if you're saying a hard stop, then that, then is that what you want? I mean, doesn't the council want to understand the issues and what the people are thinking?
Thank you for avoiding my question.
You're welcome.
And Jim, for, Jim, from my perspective, I was only looking at the open comment period, not at the discussion items. I, to me, that's two different things because when there's an actual open topic, I, I welcome input. And I have people call me at home and I welcome that. So I'm, I wasn't looking at it from that standpoint. I was just looking at it as the open topic, anything could go. So that was.
Yeah, and I think, I think five minutes on both of those is appropriate just because and people, I've never seen anybody abuse that or very, very rarely does somebody abuse that. And so why, why create these rules and constrict things when it's not a problem?
You're at six minutes, Jim.
So you're okay with the hard.
I'm joking with you.
So you're okay with a hard stop at five minutes?
Thanks, Jeff.
No, David, you get to start over.
Then I gotta sign my name again. I'm still David Janzma. Let's get over this. There are times where it'll take nothing and there's times where we have to discuss a little further. Just five minutes is a general window. Some people's clocks move faster than others anyway. Thanks.
So, you know, I just got to make a comment too. So just because this was the topic, you, you can sit down. It's not directed directly to you.
If you need me.
So I was just, I did time when they came up and made comments and Mr. Jessen's time was three minutes and ten seconds. And it was a pretty nice lengthy discussion. Sasha, one minute, I think sixteen seconds. And Jim's was three minutes and thirty-five seconds. So there was a lot of discussion in a three-minute window. And this was just open topics. Again, we cannot comment on these. We cannot have a discussion. I think the agenda items, when there's a discussion going on, that time is not held. We're not holding you to three minutes. But I think the open comment section, there was a lot of words said and one, only one over by thirty-five seconds. So I think the three minutes isn't too bad.
Are we ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
So.
Yes, so as a reminder, we are currently going to vote on the amendment to remove the restriction in section two dash nineteen point two, removing the restriction from three minutes to five.
You just, you threw, you're throwing a wrench in the vote here, Rob.
Uh, it's, uh, it's a citizen's responsibility. Uh, just a short comment. I'm going to propose to you as body that the next time that you're, that a, um, ordinance is put in front of you to raise your pay, that you all vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Some more comments out here. I think, Jim, you had another additional comment. Brad, just get them out, get them out in the open, so we can move forward on this deal.
Again, I just support the five minutes. I think it's dangerous to leave a three-minute, to say it's going to be three minutes and say, well, we're not following it. That's, that's really dangerous to say this is what we're putting in code, but we don't follow it. Wow. I, I don't understand how you, how you can even do that. I mean, that's, that's, that's your rules on your books and you're saying, well, that's, that's our ordinance. That's what we say. But we don't follow it. When do, when do you follow it? When don't you follow it? You gotta put in there what you're going to live by.
Jim, did you call, did you call Shane on this when you came across it? Did you call Shane and tell him what you thought on it?
I didn't.
I, I think that's one thing, this council and Shane, I believe he wants to hear it and, and his phone rings and we want to work together. We don't want to create more adversity in our city than there already is. So I think this council is eager to work with the community. I think it's, they're eager to answer their phones and, and work with, with you or any other constituents on these problems.
I appreciate it. And I did talk to you about it. So thank you.
Brad?
Brad Brooks, I'm signed in. Danny, question for you.
Yes, sir.
On an agenda item, what are the rules? What are we talking about? Three minutes, five minutes, unlimited time?
With this, with this code change, it would be three minutes to comment on each agenda item as well as if there's an open comment set before the meeting or at the end of the meeting, you can also have three minutes during that time. So you can comment a, um, a number of times during any given council meeting, but the limit each time is three minutes. Under this, under this code change, assuming we, we enforce it.
But the information that was put out for people to digest only talked about the open comment period. How did we get into the agenda items?
I, can you help me understand? Are you saying, or how did we get into the agenda items, like having a time limit as well?
Yeah, or what is the, what, what's the time limit right now as you and I are talking?
Five minutes.
Five minutes for an agenda item and three minutes supposedly?
No, sir. It's, it's five minutes for anything. So each time, if it's an open, if it's an open comment session, if it's our quarterly open comment session, you get five minutes. Um, but that's only, that's every three months. So now.
We haven't voted on that change from three to five.
So that would, I mean, that, we, well, it's already at five. So this ordinance is going to go down to three. Now there's a motion sitting, sitting pending to amend that back to the five. But currently it's five minutes. This adds, uh, we go from four open comment sessions a year to twelve under this ordinance. But it does limit, uh, it, it has a three-minute limit for each time. It doesn't limit the amount of times you get up. It just, each time you get up, it's three minutes unless it's not enforced.
Okay. Three minutes, five minutes, fifteen minutes. What I want to know from Jim and some of the other people that have come up here. You now have three times the amount of time that you can come up and address the council.
Yes, sir.
I, I just don't understand when people have been harping and harping and harping on this and we've given them something. Why are we sitting here? Oh, this isn't enough. This is disappointing. I mean, common sense would tell you that if you're given some extra time and whatever to do these things, you ought to take it. Or run with it. See how it works. If it doesn't work, you've got the ability to go back and refine it. But anyways.
Thank you, Brad. Well, as we sit, we've got, this is an ordinance, so this takes three readings, right?
Yes.
So we've had a good discussion on the first reading right now. We've had a lot of good feedback, a lot of good discussion from everybody out here. A lot of discussion amongst the council. So what's the best way to handle this if we want to make some changes? Can we, do we?
We already have a motion.
We have the motion for the amendment on here now, but then, so what, what's our best move here?
So, yep, so right now we have to vote on the amendments since there's a motion and a second on the table. After, pending the results of this amendment, we will go back to the original motion of the ordinance. Vote on that as amended. Pending the results of that ordinance, which can only pass on first reading tonight. We can take that ordinance back and then come back at a later meeting with either the second reading of an ordinance or a new ordinance. And again, vote that original ordinance down and come back with a, a new proposed ordinance.
Unless you vote no on the amendment, then we're just back to square one. You can pass it on all three readings tonight.
Understood. That makes sense?
Amendment we can only, we can only do tonight.
If you vote no on the amendment.
If we vote no on the amendment, then we can do all three tonight. The way it's proposed.
Do you want to read the proposed amendment quick and then we'll make the vote?
So the amendment on the table right now is to remove the amendment, to remove the three-minute amendment addressed in section two dash nineteen point two, addressing the three-minute time limit. To five minutes. Yep, it increases it to five. So essentially removes the three-minute time restriction and brings it back to five. That is what we are voting on currently. So I'm waiting on one more. Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Hildebrand, Beckman. Voting in opposition, Arns, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, so now we will go back to ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three.
Okay, so now we're voting, we're going back to ordinance, uh, fifty-nine thirty-three. As amended, as amended, right.
As amended, which can only pass on first.
And it, which is, can only pass on first reading, so. Yes.
Go ahead, yep.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three as amended from three minutes to five minutes.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Hildebrand, Beckman. Voting in opposition, Arns. Ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three carries on first reading only.
All right, moving on to item number twenty-eight. Consideration of approval of professional service consultant agreement with Emress Group LLC for the update of the City of Norfolk Municipal Code Stormwater Systems and Fees. Section twenty-six, Article four and section two dash five, project for an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And Anna's going to lead us on this, so.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
The motion is second.
So they only have five minutes to?
Three.
Do it in two and a half. Thank you, uh, council and mayor. We are requesting approval for a contract with Emress Group in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars to update sections of city code as it relates to our stormwater system. Uh, we're currently working with Emress Group, uh, to update our MS four program and our associated documents with our stormwater program, including our stormwater management plan, our emergency response plan, illicit discharge and detection elimination program manual, construction stormwater management program and operations water quality guide. Um, revising these documents will have helped the city by having up-to-date documents that follow the, the federal and state requirements. And then having these documents to show members of the community, contractors, developers, other members of the community, what's expected of them when it comes to stormwater requirements. That being said, um, since this consultant is very familiar with our current and proposed changes with our MS four um, program and documents, we'd like to award this contract to Emress Group um, to assist us in updating, um, chapter twenty-six of city code and section two, uh, dash five if necessary. Our current city code, um, I think some of the last updates we had were in twenty nineteen. So, um, we're going to be, uh, there will be a new permit coming out that the city will have to, uh, put together a new permit with the state for our MS four program. So we want to make sure that our city code is reflecting what's going to be required of us in that discharge permit when it comes out. Emress Group is very familiar with those processes and, uh, and those permits. So a couple of examples in our current city code, we have definitions in there and inspection frequencies that are incorrect. So we want to make sure that those are all matching the, the state's, um, permit. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
I got a couple. So we, we have a code already. Have we used say this company or a company similar to this to come up with it the first time? Or why are we using this company now to do this?
We, um, so back in, right, I think we had some of these documents updated in twenty seventeen. And city, some sections of the city code were updated in twenty nineteen. Uh, so that, but there's a new, uh, stormwater discharge permit with different requirements coming up that we're going to have to follow. So it changes our current MS four program and our, our manuals and stormwater, um, program manual. Uh, we need to make those updates to, um, to abide by the, the new requirements.
So I guess my question more is, do we not have the abilities to do that ourselves or they're just more knowledgeable?
The, this.
We're spending the money to do this?
Right, so this, the group that we're working with, Emress Group, uh, one of their members comes from, um, another consultant that we had used in the past to uh, do some of our, um, some of our stormwater. I think they put together some of our documents. So, um, he's already familiar with our program. The other members or, or the other, um, people working with the consultant, the owners, um, they all have, uh, water resources and stormwater background. So they're very knowledgeable when it comes to, um, this type of stuff and stormwater, stormwater compliance, uh, requirements, having the right documentation. They also work with other communities in Nebraska. Um, they're part of the, um, they follow along with our, our H two O group that we're a part of. Where the group gets together, we, you know, talk about different issues that affect all of our communities and, um, come up with solutions with that. So, um, they're, they're involved. They, they're aware of, you know, what's going on and the issues, um, that most communities face when it comes to enforcing the stormwater requirements here in town and what we are required to have as a city for our MS four program.
Now, is that constantly evolving? Because it feels like it must be because we, we update our code. We've been updating our code for stormwater requirements continuously since probably twenty-ten. So is this just stuff that gets pushed down to us that they're saying, you've got, from now, we've evolved the code. We're changing the code. You need to update yours in order to be compliant?
Yes. You know, it's, it's the state that, you know, is changing their, their permits and, you know, the language in their permits. What we're, what we're doing, uh, this time around is instead of having every single definition or everything printed out exactly as it's printed in that permit, create a lot of reference to that permit. So if that permit changes, then we don't have to do as much to update our city code.
That would make sense because it seems like we're doing this every five to six years.
Right.
You're taking on Steve's quality of just talking till we vote yes.
Oh, was I? Sorry, I thought I was trying to give some useful information. And I'm over my, I'm over my limit too, aren't I?
Okay, all right. Any other additional questions for Anna? Okay, all right. Any other additional questions for Anna? Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Thank you.
All right, on to the closed session.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Sorry. Trying to, like, on this time rush right now, I've been talking about time all night. All right, closed session, we'll be going to closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest to discuss potential litigation?
So move.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Go ahead and vote.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Yeah, the motion carried again. This closed session is for the sole purpose of updating elected officials on potential litigation. Litigation. May I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please just vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
We are adjourned.